This is called order. We have guests. We had a group from Gary County Leadership last yesterday, and there's another group today, and I've asked them to come forward and introduce themselves.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Sally Drur. I teach at Ware Elementary at USD 475.
Good morning. My name is Haley Kous, and I also teach on Fort Riley. I teach 4th grade at Ware Elementary. And we're excited to be here.
My name's Cody Hill. I am a 1st grade teacher at Fort Riley Elementary on post.
Hi, I'm Elaine Gonzalez. I teach middle school at Fort Riley Middle School.
And I'm Kimberly Smice. I teach 4th grade at Fort Riley Elementary.
We are glad that you're here. And you picked a good day to be here because this is going to be exciting. Please let the record show that there are nine members present, and a motion would be in order to approve today's agenda. Sally and Deena. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries. And at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce or to recognize Tammy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And we are delighted to have three more Gemini districts here to present their redesign plans to you. As we stated last month, these Gemini 1 schools and districts are at the forefront of redesigning, and they had the passion, the leadership, the drive, and the culture to move forward with the same timeline as the Mercury districts. I have been working really hard, Jay and I, to actually, to physically visit every single school that is launching, and we finished that this week. And so, so not only is their plan good on paper, but we've had eyes on, and it is absolutely excellent. And so first up, we would like to call Dyton USD 482.
Hi, I'm Kelly. That's Haley, Billy Joe, Shannon, Hunter, Charlie, Tatum, Whitney, Trinity, Tyler, Darla, Leighton, and Rossi Tussasi. He's our driver. He's our backbone. I'm not going to say anything else. It's all them. Thank you.
Good morning. We're excited to be here. We just want to tell you the best thing about working at Dyton USD 42 is that we have never been stuck. We have, throughout the last 10 years that I've been there, evolved over time. We see a problem, and we immediately search for a solution to fix it. I think the biggest push has been the day Dr. Arberger brought Dr. Watson to our building, and he gave us the permission to finally get rid of just passing a test and to instead do what was best for kids. So since that day, we've worked really hard to empower students to own their own learning and success. And I think since then, we've seen a real big push for these things. So you'll see as we go through that our plan isn't just a plan, and we're going to execute it tomorrow. We've been doing it over the course of time. Wrong direction.
It felt really weird because I didn't know what STEAM was at first, STEAM and STEM. And then when we got to doing it, we all wanted to do it every day.
You did.
Yeah.
What are some of the projects you did?
Um, we did the first one where there was this little toy type thing that was named Harry, and we had to build a tower for him. Second one, we built a different tower, and then we had to use it for, and make an earthquake which shook the table.
So what did you learn from them?
Engineering. I learned a lot about engineering and how to build and stuff like that.
You did?
How to build things properly.
Did you like working in groups?
Mm-hmm. That was a lot better than working STEM by ourselves.
You like it in the groups?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Do you want to do more of it?
Yeah. Because if you work by yourselves, you don't have the great ideas other people have.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
So really, that's why we're doing this, because kids deserve it, and we want them to have conversations like that and be excited about school. That young man you'll get a chance to talk to is here. This is Charlie, and you're welcome to ask him questions after we're done. So as I said, we indict and we find problems, and we immediately search for a solution. The first problem that we noticed that our kids were having was they were not able to communicate with each other. With the advances in technology, they just don't know how to talk. They don't know how to work as a team. They didn't play like most kids played years ago. You know, they didn't have, they don't do that. They play differently. And so we noticed that this was a problem, so we searched for a solution, and what we found was STEAM and STEM. And we've really implemented this a lot, and we've come up with, not just has this fixed our student communication, but all of those things that are listed on there as well. We've, we've seen a great transition from our kids not being able to do those things to all of a sudden, they're really working through and able to do those. I'd like to point out the little boy to the left behind that STEAM project there. That little boy, the day he walked into my 2nd grade classroom, we did a STEM project, and he stood at the back counter and looked out the window afraid to talk to his teammates. He didn't want them to hear his ideas because they thought they, he thought they weren't good. He was afraid that they would discredit his ideas. And so what I have is a video of him in March of that same school year. I'll point him out when it gets to him. So again, that's why we do it, because we want kids to be able to own that and to have the confidence to use what they know and not be ashamed to share it with others. And we've really found that this STEAM and STEM has improved the communication skills of our kids.
And not only that, the picture at the bottom, that's some 5th graders building a hydraulic claw that we used with, I taught force and motion lesson. And then the kids wanted to know if they could build this, and I said, "Let's do it." And the one thing I can say we learned from this project, they're using syringes and tubing and controlling the claw with the force and the motion and everything else. And it blew up about 15 times, exploded. So we taught a lot of resilience. And that's what I feel is so important is because they're going to face adversity in life. That's going to be, that's a real life skill that I can use a project and incorporate in their lives. And there was a lot of resilience that went on with this project. This is a, I'm not sure if this is a STEAM/STEM PBL. I'm not really sure what this is. This is a project that 5th and 6th graders worked on together. I don't know how to label it exactly. It was very organic how it happened. I was teaching them about recycling and renewable energy. And they wanted to make something out of nothing. This is a picture of the homeless mat made out of grocery sacks, Walmart sacks. And we woven together. There was a project manager, and she came up with the idea. She researched it. She taught the rest of the kids. And we thought we were going to make several homeless mats. Turned out to only be one. It was a lot more work than we anticipated, but this is the gentleman who received it after we mailed it to a homeless shelter. So we put a lot of civic duty and empathy and any of that into it as well.
So another problem that we noticed that our kids were having was their self-regulation. They would come to school, and they weren't ready to learn because of things that had happened at home or just the trauma that had happened in their lives. So we started searching for a solution, and we ran across school families. School families is something that a lot of districts are doing, and we kind of took it from them and started making it our own. We noticed that, again, it didn't just fix self-regulation. We also were able to meet those little, those things over there on the side. It fixed that. So here's an example. This is my school family, and you can see that boy in the top right. I didn't want to use this picture because I thought, "Oh, he looks so mad that day. I hate that we took the picture." But then I realized this is why we do school families. That young man had had a fight that morning with his father's wife, girlfriend, actually. And she just moved into the house, and it's a total new change for him. And he really couldn't regulate that that day. So we were able to talk about that, get him through it. And then I was able to talk to his teachers throughout the rest of the day, and he actually was able to come out of that and really, really was able to focus on his schoolwork. And had we not had those conversations that morning, he would not have been able to do that. And so through our school families, we're able to grab those kids first thing on Monday and get their, their little lives turned around. They know they're with us. They're in a safe environment. They're here to learn, and we're ready to move on. And I think that has really become a staple in our everyday life.
And I can vouch for that. I had him at 10 o'clock, and I would have never known. So it is very effective.
Another problem that we saw is that kids were not able to take the information that we were teaching them and apply it to real life. They were, we were feeding them information just to pass a test, but then we'd give them a real-world problem, and they couldn't use that, apply it to their real learning. So what we incorporated was project-based learning. This is continuing to evolve in our district. We're doing more and more all the time through this. One of the ones that I've done recently, we've done lots. This is just one example. I took my kids to the food bank, thank you, the food bank, and showed them all the empty shelves that were on the, in the food bank and asked them, "How do you think we could help stock these shelves?" From there, they came up with the lemonade stand. We actually ran a lemonade stand. We went and I, we even got a loan. That's the banker there on the side. We had to get a loan to start the lemonade stand. With interest, yes. We talked about interest. My little 2nd graders, they, they, they kind of got the first taste of what interest is like and got our loan, ran our business. We actually, they each had us an amount that they could spend. We went to the grocery store. They purchased the supplies. It's actually walking distance to the food bank. So we literally carried our grocery sacks over to the food bank and stocked their shelves with the things that they needed. They counted the money. They did the work, and through that, so many different things, they were able to use the money in a real-life situation. So they could transfer it. They could apply what they knew to now a real-life application setting. So that has been huge for us.
This is one of the most effective lessons I've taught and the most real-world lessons as well. This is the 6th, 6th graders doing mock job interviews. They get little jobs around the school. Definitely empowering them. And then we brought in people from the community to interview the kids. We taught so many lessons with just this one thing, etiquette, shaking hands, looking people in the eyes. All those things that we have noticed has been a decline in our society that we're able to. Now, because of PBL and everything, we can incorporate these in our everyday lessons. There was a lot, there was a lot of, a lot of lessons that went into this that I didn't even realize until we, until we started doing it. But again, I was so proud walking out of there. They were, I felt like they were much more ready for the real world when we, when we finished this project. This is another huge application, our outdoor garden. There's so many things we've taught with it, but we go to the classroom, learn about plants. We go plant, plants. We've, we've grown plants to raise money. We've learned, we're doing a bee PBL right now. We're doing worms and composting. So many things that we can learn about and then get our hands dirty. This is also, I've had some of the best conversations I've had with the kids out in this garden with our hands dirty pulling weeds. So there's definitely an emotional thing out there that I wasn't expecting as well. So this has been one of the best tools we have at our school as well.
Another big problem that we've seen is the ability gap in each classroom. So for instance, I teach 2nd grade. I was seeing kids coming to me who might have a kindergarten preschool reading level, all the way up to I had kids who were reading at a 5th grade level. It's impossible to sit 20 kids down in one classroom, all reading the exact same leveled text, and expect them all to be getting something out of it. I was maybe getting 3 kids. So what we started doing was we, we called them pods. We've actually grouped our grade levels. We're, we're unique in the fact that we only have one classroom per grade level. And so we've grouped them according to, like, primary, 3-6 is a pod, and 5, 3-4 is a pod, and 5-6 is a pod. And we've actually added people to those groupings that are certified teachers plus really highly qualified paras. So there's more people to break these kids down into small group according to their ability level, not just what grade they are in. So I say I teach 2nd grade, but I also throughout the day have other grade-leveled kids coming to me according to their ability and teaching right where they need to be. So we actually didn't have a picture of our pods because we were busy teaching during pods. So here is your picture for pods. But I can say through K2, that's, that's the end that I'm, I'm most familiar with. We have really broken down our kids during certain portions of the day by their ability and using very small groups, 4 to 6 at the most, and teaching exactly what they need as opposed to everybody getting the exact same thing. And we've seen a huge increase in their fluency reading and their actual math skills by doing that. Because they're getting what they need, not what their grade level says they should be getting. 3, 4, 5, 6. Good. Okay. So really, just for our elementary building, we have decided that instead of just memorizing information to pass a test, we want to shift from that thinking to can our kids work together? Are they collaborating? Are they problem-solving? Are they thinking critically? Can they fail and then learn from that failure and keep going? Are they persevering through that? And the bottom one is highlighted on purpose. We have not forgot about academics. We want them to use those academics in a real situation. Can they apply what we're teaching to the real world? So with that, we're going to turn it over to our high school.
I, I have to tell you guys one thing before we switch gears to the older kids. Literally 2 minutes before we started, he turned around and said, "Okay, if this doesn't work out, are we still going to get to do all this?" So that, I mean, but that, things like that are so powerful because it's like, "Holy moly, this is working, and they want it." So that's, that's really rewarding for us to see.
And, and it's going to work out.
Do you feel better? Okay, so notice your lovely picture of caution area under construction. I think, I can't speak for everybody in our building, but our grade school is a well-oiled machine, and they have really, over the past 2 and 3 years, been sort of working through this process already. And so you're seeing videos and pictures of things that have happened over 2, 2 and 3 years-ish of conversation. And in our building, in the junior, senior high, we started talking about this in September of last year, and we're like, "Let's do it." And then we went to see some places, and then we were really like, "Let's do this." And so a lot of what we have is much rougher. We're still ironing out the wrinkles, but we feel like we're making steps in the right direction. So the first problem that we really saw with our kids was engagement. I feel like the older they get, the harder it is to get the buy-in. And we, I really noticed especially after we went out and saw places, how engaged these students were in these other schools that were trying new things. And I came back into my classroom after the first visit that I went on, and I made it through first hour. And I got out my phone during passing period, and I text Dr. A., and I said, "Can we start tomorrow?" Because it is so hard to teach kids that are unengaged. So that's really something that we have tried to solve that problem. And we have created a PBL academy for our 10 through 12th graders, so they have a lot of choice. That's something that we're really big on. We want to make sure, the older they get, they get, the more opinions they have, and we want to give them choice. We experimented a little bit with PBL in the spring, and so they kind of got a little taste. And our 10 through 12th graders can choose to take PBL for any of the core classes. And we feel like it's really solving our engagement problem as well as those other things. Here are some pictures just of our room, which is a work in progress. But what I have seen so far is kids that are very focused on what they want to do. They want to get in there so bad, and they're ready to start building these projects. And we're, we're using Project Foundry as kind of a platform, which is a learning project, a learning process in and of itself. But they're, they have their little desks, and they're, they're just focused in there, and it's a very, like, almost a workplace environment, and it's just really awesome. Do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Boom. Go, girl.
So the other problem that we wanted to address at our school is rigor. I'm a 4th-year teacher, and I noticed even in my first year, you know, with my complete lack of knowledge of what it takes to be an educator, that the rigor that I experienced as a student wasn't the same as I, as I was a 1st-year teacher. And that was an issue that we felt like, you know, was probably, if not one of the biggest, probably the biggest at any rate. So we decided that we wanted to choose Summit Learning. This is a nice group to talk to because I don't have to sell Summit Learning to you. Like, we're in the process of doing in our community. And I hope you can key me back in if we lose track and don't talk about kind of the community part of that. We chose Summit Learning for these reasons: relevance, self-advocacy, time management, self-direction. We felt like this was a platform that would do all the things that we wanted it to do. We didn't take this lightly. We evaluated a lot of other programs before we landed on Summit. And I think one of the biggest problems that we have is that our students in the past have waited on us for all their cues. And Summit Learning, it forces students to be self-directed. There's a philosophy behind it that we're in agreement with. And again, it was not a decision taken lightly. But we did choose Summit Learning for those purposes. And I just wanted to say parenthetically, and I'm kind of going rogue here.
He always does.
I do that. I, I just think that our community, we're, we're getting a little bit of pushback. And my message to other schools would be, sometimes pushback is a sign that you're doing something right, that you're doing something well. Students are, and some parents are responding to the fact that their students are being held accountable for work and for things that they haven't been held accountable for in the past. So I think that's been one of the things that we've been excited to see is, despite some pushback, that we know that this is the best thing for students.
Yeah, and I would just add that we're doing this in grades 7 through 9. It is a very reg, it's like very regimental. You have to do this many minutes. You, I don't know how familiar you are with it, but you know, you have to play by the rules. You're getting a very nice program for free. And so we have sacrificed some things to do this, but we feel like it's giving them the academic foundation to be successful in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade where they have more choice. And it's also, you know, going back to that rigor, we have kids who have a 4.0 that can't get a 21 on the ACT. And that, there is a disconnect there that we have to look hard at. What, what are we doing? And that means we have a rigor problem. And so we, this right here is, and a lot of kids, it's coming around. We'll talk more about that later. But that initial, "What do you mean I can't do everything with my friend? We're not all doing it together as a class. We're not all..." I mean, there, it's just good teaching practices that really hold them accountable for what they know. And it's also reinforcing the idea of, "You're at a 2 on the rubric. Let's try to get to a 3." It doesn't matter that he's at a 5, and we're trying to get him to a 6. It's kind of going back to your pod idea of, "Let me meet you where you are and push you a little further." I don't care how smart you are. All I care about is, "Did you learn today?" And it's some kids, you know, the smart ones are the ones who know the system. They're struggling a little bit because it's like, "What's going on here?" Well, you're not pushing. Those other kids are pushing all the time. They have to work. And so we're just sort of, you know, pushing through that process. Okay, here's some Summit Learning pictures. We did a, a science lab where they had to do some investigations. They're working in pairs. There is a lot of cross-collaboration, but when it comes to assessing what they're doing, that is all 100% the students' work. So there is no, like, "Do it in a group and hand it in" kind of thing. Maybe I'm the only teacher that did that a lot. I don't know. That doesn't happen in Summit. This is your baby. You turn it in. I'm just evaluating you.
I, I think, just to kind of wrap up with Summit, one of the, the things that we were so excited about is, it's not focused on a grade. It's focused on mastery of content or concept. And I believe that to be, you know, probably the, the greatest thing is that the idea of learning in isolation is kind of a thing of the past with Summit Learning. Students are going to walk out the door. They're not going to just remember it for a test. They're going to be able to take that with them. 20, 30 years, they're going to have mastery of content. And I, I think, and Whitney would probably agree with us, I think in the past, my teaching that students would remember things long enough to take a test, get the best grade they could, then they'd move on. Summit takes that out of the equation, and it's focused on mastery. And that, that's, I think, you know, the big takeaway.
Yep. This is a picture of kids in personalized learning time. So they get to sort of decide how they want to work, what they want to work on, and you can just see them making decisions for what's best for them. But really, looks to me like everybody's on task, which is a checkmark in the right direction. Is this me?
That's you.
Awesome. Sorry, I forget. We're flip-flopping. Okay, so I feel like our next problem kind of ties back into that engagement piece also. Relevance. You know, our kids, I can't tell you how many times a day kids would say, "Why do I need to know this? This is stupid. This isn't going to help me. I could be at work." All very credible critiques. And so our one solution, even though we have a bunch more, is really we have created and tried to focus on a work-study program that is much more rigorous. Students had to fill out an application. They had to go through an interview process. They're actually, I think they're just starting that. They've been in there for like a week or so. But you know, we just, especially with our older kids, this is something that only juniors and seniors have the opportunity to do. Hey, maybe you don't need to be in school for 8 hours. If you know that you want to go work with your goats or you have a goat herd, hint, hint, you might, you know, maybe your time is best spent out there with your goats. That's real-life application. You're applying what you know. You're motivated. Go do that. So we've got our beekeeper here. I think Tatum hijacked him a little bit and had him do some presenting for her PBL. And they love, nothing excites a kid more than when you say, "Hey, what you're doing is awesome. Can you come tell my littles about this?" And then it's like, boom. Talk to them about Mr. Nichols.
In the picture there, you see some gentlemen by the yellow cabinets. That was actually a school trip to go to Montana School College where they teach welding. And they, the students there, 10 through 12, got to take part in a welding competition with the shop teacher. I actually got to go along, which is weird because I'm the English teacher. But we needed 2 people to, to go on the trip. It was a really long drive. We were driving, we drove all night long to get there, did the welding competition for a day, and then drove all night all the way back. And you know, that's, I think, kind of, the point is that, hey, we do what we do for students. When they get done with the Dyton shop program, they're going to be welding at college level. They'll be able to go directly into a college welding program, and they're already going to know how to weld. They're going to know the markings. They're going to know the measurements. So again, this goes back to relevance. I also want to give a shout-out to KSDE, Dr. Watson. The, the information from the study that KSDE did about, you know, going into soft skills and employability, those things, that shaped a lot of our thinking about the relevance piece. We did not take that, that data lightly in terms of, you know, what do state stakeholders think? And that, that's going largely into our relevance piece.
This is a picture of one of our kids that's doing work-study this year. I think we kind of hijacked that picture from last year. He was getting ready to do a presentation for something else. But because we were so excited on interview day, nobody could get their phone out and take a picture. So that's just kind of to show that. And then the table, you know more about the table than I do.
This is actually a, a project that we had our students take part in. Our local hospital needed a new conference table. Our local hospital um, needed a new conference table. So uh, we used multiple sections of shop classes uh, to do woodworking, metalwork, uh, finish work and painting to complete this table. Um, we also worked with our community stakeholders. Uh, we worked with hospital staff. We had community members. We had the maintenance staff at our high school. We had other teachers uh, that joined in. So um, one of the interesting things too is, parts of this table were made from the bleacher wood from the old high school. So there is a direct tieback to uh, you know, our community and civic engagement because that table, um, we had to do quite a bit of prep work to get it ready. There's actually was a lot of gum stuck underneath the seats, the old bleachers. So we had students, I was there too, pulling gum, scraping gum off the bottom of that. But again, if you want to talk about, you know, something that was, has going to be in our community for a long, long time, and it already was, it was already part of our high school, now it's part of our hospital. Um, so those are just kind of some of the projects that um, that we wanted to, you know, start with our civic engagement piece, trying to tie things together. And not just uh civic, but there's also kind of a, a local culture piece to that, I think is, is really fantastic.
Yeah, that other picture you see, um, I can't even remember how long we've been doing it, because I'm getting old. But um, our NHS chapter um, started hosting a Veterans Day program. And so every year it gets a little bigger, a little more elaborate, and we invite the veterans in for breakfast, and then we bombard them with all these kids. Um, and there's this time before the program starts where they get to kind of just talk to each other. And you get cool pictures like this um, of, of kids talking with these older people. And I'm the NHS chapter sponsor, and every year getting them going on it is kind of like pulling teeth, because it's, you know, we're all busy, and you kind of have to push a little. And then the day that it happens, the minute that everything calms down, every single one of them is like, whoa. Every single one of those men came up to me and said, thank you. Did you see that guy? He was crying. Oh my gosh, that was so, you know. And I feel like throughout that program, our grade school does a great job. Every class chips in and kind of has a little piece of it. Um, but you, I never feel so loved as I do the day after, like the weekend after Veterans Day, because every single person I see is like, thank you, thank you, thank you. And it's so simple, but the, they really realize, I can make a difference. I can make these people, I can say, it's something so simple as recognize them, sing a song, read a poem, sell some flags. Um, and they just, they get it. It clicks.
Uh, another problem, uh, time management. Uh, some of our time management issues uh, relate directly to uh, these things. Um, students have a, a lot of time apparently to waste, uh, the way school used to be. Um, again, tying in with rigor and our relevance, we don't have time to waste. So uh, we have created uh, solutions to that. I'm going to let Whitney kind of line that out.
Okay, so um, I always tell people when we present this in the community that if I could describe Flex Mod to you in one word, it would be complicated. Uh, there is no simple way to, to explain this, but basically, we chose Flex Mod because last year we had an eight-hour day, and I knew I was going to see my kids every day for 50 minutes. And so, you know, if we didn't get to it, there was always tomorrow. And if it didn't go, you know, there, there was no urgency about what we were doing. They were like, oh, I'll, I'll do it later. Uh, I can, uh, uh. What this does is it really puts pressure on me and them in a good way to be like, when we're in this room together, this is a big deal, because I'm only seeing you for three, three times for 40 minutes. So when you come in here, you better be on it, because I'm going. And if you, we don't have time, we don't have time. You have to go. Get your paper in the basket. Yes, do this, do this, do this. And then on the flip side, with the time management also, for the kids, they have flex time. And this is something that um, we kind of call PL, we still call it PLT for Summit. Um, and it's a little more regu-, regimented because 7th through 9th graders kind of need that help. Um, but our 10th through 12th graders, they have flex time. And so some of them are doing work-study because they have enough flex time. Some of them are being, getting able to be teacher's aides. Um, and what happens in that room, you know, and believe me, let me tell you, we've been there for one month, and every week the Flex Mod, the Flex Room, there's something new. Because we are, I mean, we have to be on top of what they're doing. The day that uh Netflix got blocked, y'all should have seen Tyler. She was like, what's going on? Where's Spotify? Okay, I'm sorry, Spotify. Um, so you know, we're learning along with them, but these kids are in this room sometimes for 80 minutes at a time, depending on how their schedule works out, and it's like, what are you going to do? And we, because we want them to learn to manage their time, when they come in our classroom, it's a no-phone zone. Put your phone up. No, you're not allowed to have it. But when you come in this room, you want to be treated as an adult, we're trying to get you there, great. You can have your phone. Um, if your grades aren't too great, we'll help you make some good choices. We'll, we'll support you. We'll provide some scaffolding, and perhaps take your phone, you know, remove that right for a week or so, kind of help you figure it out. But in that room, we're watching, we're observing, we're helping, but we're not telling anybody, you need to do your math. You need to do your, you know, and it's a learning curve, and I will say, uh, like I said, every week has been a new, a new thing, but it's getting better. So, and I think they like it. They're going to tell you. Okay, here's some pictures. I literally walked in there at the end of the day. Um, so here you go. Comfortable seating. Oh, look, someone's reading a book. That's awesome. Here is hm, 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 the Flex Mod schedule, the beginning. It only took us, um, when did we start? From March till, you know, August 10th, to really shore it up. We're already thinking about next year. We have figured out that we have to work ahead, because what we did was not sustainable. Um, it was crazy. So, the last problem, and this is something that Dr. A talked to our whole district about at the end, or at the beginning of the year, is really what we're trying to do is help kids find their why. When I go up to any kid, hopefully in the high school, and I say, why are you here? Why are you doing that? What's going on? We really want them to be able to say, well, I really would like to be a veterinarian, so I'm taking this Fuel Ed class about animal science, and I'm also in the FFA program. And in English, I'm writing a paper about goats, blah, blah, blah. So our solution here is one-to-one uh, weekly mentoring. This is something that is also required by Summit. We kind of stole their idea. Um, we decided after going through that training that this is gold. And I'll be the first person to say that I was like, uh, you want me to sit down with these kids for 10 minutes a day and, or 10 minutes a week and like, have a personal, like, really touchy-feely conversation? I'm kind of nervous about this. I don't know. I'm not a counselor. What do I do? Um, guys, it's awesome. Like, from week one to, what are we, on week four? Week one, conversation with a ninth grader in Summit. I hate this. I have no idea what to do. I can't do this. No one's teaching me. Week four, I really need more self-control. I'm trying. I've taken my content assessment three times, but I just can't pass it. But we just had that little workshop and you helped me. And by talking, then I went and took it and I passed it. So I think maybe I need to talk to people about it before I take my assessment. I think if I stay in this program and really try, it's going to pay off. What? Whoa. Um, we're refining it for our 10th through 12th graders. Some genius made a Google form that didn't work right this week. Who was that? Um, but we're stealing, kind of, kind of like modifying that Summit idea. It's just amazing the connections that you can make. One of my mentees was struggling with his math assessment. Hey, let's get you in there with the math teacher. When can you go? She's in the Flex Room Mod 7. You have PLT time. Get to your PLT teacher. Say, hey, I need to go talk to Mrs. Felker and get in there. I got on my computer at 3 o'clock. Oh, passed his assessment. He walks in my room, homeroom at the end of the day. Hey, what'd you do today? Passed my content assessment, and they're so excited. It's awesome. Sorry, I'm, I'm a little excited about that. Okay, I think the next slide is the end slide. So before we conclude, we're going to let you talk to three of our fantastic students. Uh, they're going to tell you a little bit about what they like, and then we'll say our little conclusion, and then you can just hammer them with questions.
Uh, I'm Tyler Schmalsreed. I'm a sophomore.
Uh, I'm Trinity Pierce, and I'm a junior.
And I'm Hunter Stevens, and I'm a senior. Um. What's that?
Oh, hold on.
I'm Charlie Vogel, and I'm in 4th grade.
Um, I think something with the PBL, the PBL is one of my favorite things, because you can learn about what you want to learn about. Um, there are some classes that you're required to take that wouldn't be as relevant to you, depending on what you want to go into. So, like for me, say I want to go into livestock and learn more about livestock. Chemistry isn't as relevant in certain areas. And so you can kind of get a head start if you can learn about what you want to learn about, and kids are more motivated to learn about something that they care about and really want to learn about. They're more self-motivated. And truth of the matter is, you can learn about just anything on your phone. I mean, your phone's a very, very good resource. And the PBL is really teaching you to learn on your own and use your resources.
Um, I'm taking two B, two PBL classes. I have English 10 and I have chemistry. And I'm a writer. I have like two writing classes. And so I'm learning, since I want to be a writer of some sort, um, I can see, hey, I can write a paper what I want over a chemistry subject that I want for, with PBL, because you can kind of correlate your subjects into each other and like, knock out a couple of standards in one writing assignment. And I think it's a major improvement, because instead of like, here's your chemistry worksheet, it's like, I get to manage myself. I get to choose what I want to do for this topic.
Uh, I, PBL is my favorite, because like, I'm taking PBL in history and English 11. And like, English 11 for me would be easy, because I read books all the time. That's all I do. And like, history, I'm kind of regretting it a little, because Mr. Coulson's a fun teacher, and I'm like, what are you doing? But I have like, a bunch of stuff to do in English 11, but then in history, I can like, I don't have to write a paper. Like, I can make a diagram or make a model of something. I don't have to just write a paper or do a slide like normal, and I like that idea.
One of our friends in PBL, she has chemistry, and she's making this like, she's making food for us for one of her projects. It's like boba tea thingies.
She's making boba.
Yeah.
And they're like jelly.
And she's using like the chemical composition of those to make like food for people. And it's like, you go, girl. Yeah.
We're just excited to eat.
Always, always.
I like PBL, because you get to do pro- projects that a lot of people don't know what they're doing in other projects, hand in a paper. They don't understand. PBL teaches you how to do stuff which would happen in real life.
Solid point. Okay, we got, are you guys?
Questions? Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Let, let me do this one thing, because I have OCD. Oh, here's a picture. We totally pose that truth. But we do do one-to-one weekly mentoring. We just don't have time for pictures. Okay, so our little conclusion is basically that we're just starting, and it's not perfect, and we know that. But we have some good leader, some good student leaders in our school, I think, who are really helping us sort of transition. Um, and our te-, you know, every day's a new struggle, but we're facing it with excitement. Um, and the bottom line is, we are expecting ourselves to do the same thing, our, things we're asking of our kids. We have to work together. We have to collaborate. We have to solve these problems. We have to think critically. We have to know how to fail and learn from it, because believe me, there's a lot of failing. But there's a lot of learning, and the next time's always better. We're persevering, and we still in the back of our mind know it's our job to teach these standards. So we feel like we're holding ourselves to the same standards as our students. Boom. Now.
Your pre-, your presentation is very uh exciting. We appreciate that. And by the way, look at us. You're a long way from being old. Questions? We're going to, at, as soon as we finish with this, as soon as we finish this process, we have certificates and banners. Banners are about the size of a school bus. Uh, and so we would like to have pictures with the elementary group and with the uh, secondary group when we get through it. So we'll take a short break. Do you have something to say, Sally?
You guys were awesome. Thank you. You make me proud, and um, you, you did a great job. I have a question, and then I have a motion. Okay? One thing that I get, and I get it from your community, I get phone calls from your community. Do you, and the teachers and the student, I don't care who answers this, okay? The question is, the uh, your community worries about whether you feel like you are getting the basics that you need in um, the current way of teaching. And so I'd like for you to um, address that and answer that.
You want to go? Go, girl.
How would you like me to answer them?
For, I can speak specifically for primary, where the foundation is the most important, I would say, because if I don't teach those kids to read and do their math, they cannot do the PBLs that they, they are required to do. I would say that now, teaching this way, my kids definitely know more of the information, because they've not only been taught the information, but now they're taking the information and using it. They're taking their reading ability and putting it into practice. So I would say, not only are they still getting it, but they're getting it better. They're getting it more, because we're teaching it and using it.
Um, the concern is also in the high school, that, especially when you go to the PBLs and everything like that. How are they getting their, their very basic math and English and?
Yes, go.
Good. I would love for you to answer this.
Um, so before, it was basically, okay, I'm going to just use math as an example. Here's your lesson. You need to memorize the stuff so you can get an A on the test, and then you need to get that stuff out of your head and make room for the next stuff. So I can say with 100% certainty, I took, we took a science map test of, like a week ago, and I didn't retain anything. I, it didn't work. But this year already, even within like the first few weeks of it, I'm already like, with PBL. It's like, hey, if I'm doing something that I want to do, I'm still learning the standards, but I, I'm gonna, because I like it, I'm going to remember it. And I think that's really important. Like, I'm still learning my standards and everything that I need to know, but it's so much better, because I'm not getting it out of there for the next test or the next slideshow or the next paper I have to write, or, yeah.
And I would argue also that um, in the junior, senior high, that is one of the reasons why we picked Summit, because let's, I mean, everyone really needs a strong foundation in physics. I mean, some people really do, and it's good that you understand the basics of physics, you know, forces and motion and all that stuff. But if you don't love physics, then don't, you know what I mean? But Summit is good teaching practices. Here's a fantastic lesson. Be prepared. Go do it. We know it's all aligned. We're following it to the T. We're checking off those boxes, and those are foundational skills that they have to have. And the idea is, when they get out of Summit, I don't know if you can graduate from Summit, but when they get to 10th grade, they're ready to fly. Where do you want to go and what do you want to do? And if you know you want to work with livestock, then maybe you don't want to take physics. Maybe you want to take A and P, because that's more applicable to you, and you have the skills to meet those standards. And you're still meeting those standards in PBL, because we're tracking them. Project Foundry is going to check all those boxes. They have all those standards in there. They have to meet them. They're going to be evaluated by someone who's highly qualified in that area. Um, they still, it's just a different way to go about it.
Yeah, and like, so I had to take Algebra II, and I can tell you, I don't remember any of it. But if I could have applied that and learned about percentages and feed rations and all your percentages and everything else, and money management, a different kind of math, that would be more applicable to what I want to use it for. Could be more helpful than taking Algebra II or trigonometry or something.
Like, if you want to go into, say, welding, should you have to sit through a year of biology, like?
Well, the state says you have to have a life science credit, so kind of.
Yeah.
That's a whole set of different questions.
Well, we are very proud of you and I think this is what you're waiting for, to know, whatever. And so you need to listen to this very carefully because it answers your question. Okay? I move to accept the redesign plans of Dayton USD 482 for the Dayton Elementary. And do you think we ought to do it for the junior and senior high too? Okay, Dayton Junior Senior High to be implemented during the 2018-19 school year as a participant in the Gemini One project.
Is there second to that motion? Ken Willard seconds that motion and, and we're not going to vote right now. We have one more question and then we're running out of time. So Ken, I'm going to recognize you and then we're going to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of you mentioned, and maybe Sally already addressed it, that getting pushback. And I'm not clear in who that pushback is coming from. It's coming from parents, coming from the community, the business community or what does that look like?
Um, I can address that just a little bit. Um, some of the pushback, and again, I think this is a pretty small amount of pushback. It is some community members, parents. I think, you know, one of the places that people are telling me is I don't do any social media, but I think that's one of the places where this has turned up. Um, I think we've been super transparent with our community and my answer to anyone that has questions is, one, do your homework. Do, do any due diligence and research that you need to do for yourself. And then come talk to us, ask questions, be direct. Um, I think that's probably the best way, you know, that we could sit down together and, and discuss concerns. Um, does that answer the question?
Well, possibly. I, um, I, I don't know. I, I know that before we began this, these projects, still, the business community says, when, when kids come out of school, they can't, you know, they're not any use to us. Are, are you getting, still getting that kind of pushback or fear that this is not addressing it or I'm just?
I think the fear is purely academic. I think, and honestly, um, you know, I can hear the voices behind me saying, I think a lot of this is just a response to change. We live in the Midwest. We live in a very traditional community. Um, I think some people are very threatened by, by change. Um, I can remember 25 years ago, um, there was a bond issue to buy computers for the entire school district. And that was in jeopardy because the same community wasn't going to approve money for computers because you had a contingent of people that didn't think computers were going to stick around. So I, and I'm not belittling the community members that have these concerns. I think those are, in their eyes at least, legitimate concerns and I can understand that. Um, and I can say too that, um, you know, anytime you implement a new process, there's going to be some bumps. We're expecting an implementation dip. We know that's coming.
I think it's here.
I think it is and I think that's some of, some of the pushback, but I think a lot of it is, is just a response. People are just afraid of change and especially when you make sweeping changes at this level. Um, I've had conversations with our staff at our building in the high school that we, we've discussed. We've changed our culture as teachers and people that work in the building. We've went to the trainings. We've seen the meetings. We've read the books. We've done the culture change. But yet here we are. We have a community and our students that have not undergone that culture change. Um, one of the books that we're looking at right now is Jimmy Costas Cultureize. Uh, I think going into, you know, the rest of this year into year two is there's a culturization piece for community and students. Um, so if I was to give advice to, uh, you know, other schools contemplating the process, um, just be aware. Um, and that, one of the things that we're going to do to address this as well is we're going to have a community school day. Um, we're going to open the doors. We're going to have, uh, anybody, stakeholders, parents, whoever wants to come. They're going to get to come and watch. They can come and see. Um, we're, we're going to make sure that, you know, we don't interrupt our school day, but that, uh, you know, our doors are open. People can come in. They can watch the instruction. Um, you know, they can take a look at what's going on. Um, I think, uh, we have told several community groups, we've had presentations where we always give resources and we link them to KSDE and the Summit Learning Platform. Um, and I don't know, I think I'd like to foster as much trust as we can because we didn't, we did not enter into this lightly. And we've also had conversations that it would have been easy to continue to teach traditionally. It would have been easy. Change is hard, but I think, um, we have a office that we use to plan everything that we do. We call it our war room. And in the war room, we have one guiding principle in addition to our vision statement. And Dr. A says this, I think every day, Mrs. Redd, Mr. Pink, our principals. We do what's best for kids and we believe in our heart of hearts that this is and the data backs that up. I think KSDE has done a tremendous job of preparing the way for our change. And um, I, I think we're going to weather the storm fine. I think in a year, I think things are going to look incredibly different.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor? All opposed? See, it worked. We will take, present the certificates and the, and the banners and the board will reconvene in 10 minutes.
Next up, I'd like to welcome North Ottawa County USD 239. That should call people back, right? Eventually? All right.
Well, welcome.
Well, thank you for having us here today. Um, I'm Chris Vannery. I'm the school superintendent for North Ottawa County. Um, today with us, we, we brought our, our board president, Bridget Nelson. Our junior, senior high school principal, Terry Meckel, our elementary principal, Pat Anderson, and a second grade teacher. Uh, Taren Hawk, who is also part of our redesign team. We, we left many at home. We have plenty to do at home, uh, but we are excited to be here. An opportunity for us to present to you guys, um, the process that we've gone through as well as, as what we're doing with our redesign. Um, we thank you for the opportunity to be able to, to redesign. For us, this process, it began three, four years ago. We knew that changes needed to happen. We knew that things, uh, we knew, we needed to go in a different direction for our students just because the workforce has been dictating that. And so the research that we've gathered, the schools that we've had opportunities to visit has played a huge part in the direction that we, we have decided to go as well as leadership from the state board and Commissioner, uh, Dr. Watson. And so what you're going to hear today from us is something that we're excited about. Staff is excited about it and so far, three weeks into school, the, the students have really adapted well to what we're doing. So I'm going to stop here and let the, uh, Mrs. Hawk, our second grade teacher, share with you what we're doing in the grade school. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. There we go. We, um, sat down together as leadership team to come up with a mission specific to our elementary. Oh, sorry. Thank you. They're in the back. Thank you. And, um, our mission that we came up with fits what we've done with our redesign because our mission is to prepare students for tomorrow's world. Uh, we want to provide an effective and innovative educational practices in a safe and supportive environment. So that is specific to what we are doing as part of our redesign at the elementary school. Our district goals were developed as part of the KISA project and the first district goal has to do with relevance. And we wanted to make sure as a district that we were making sure that our, our high school graduates were, um, able to go out into, um, the real world with certificates, um, with post-secondary opportunities and that may even include the military service. Our second, you can't even see. Our second area was the responsive culture. And, uh, we wanted to make sure that our students had an opportunity to, um, participate in community service opportunities. All right. Um, we have been redesigning for actually quite a while and part of that timeline has included, um, starting out with project-based learning 101 through the Buck Institute of, um, in Columbus, Ohio. And we want, started with a fifth grade group of teachers who piloted project-based learning before the rest of us did at the elementary school and that was in July 2017. January 2018, kindergarten teachers and, um, our administration, uh, received training on the ASQ3 to support, um, kindergarten readiness. April 2018, um, we were trained in Panorama, which is a social emotional survey. And that measures the development and the implementation is also ongoing. July 2018 was when, um, fifth grade teachers received their training in PBL 201 through the Buck Institute. And, and then in May of 2018, all of the MGS staff attended, um, a TAZN co-teaching training. And that was really something that we wanted to do as educators because we knew that project-based learning was going to require a lot of co-teaching and co-planning. So that was something that we really, um, asked for and were able to get immediately before our project-based learning training. Then again, that same May, the 21K through four teachers along with sixth grade sped and our administrator went to Burke Burnett, Texas for our PBL 101 training. June 2018, the fifth, sixth grade and sped, as well as our administrators, attended the Summit Learning Training in Kansas City. And coming up in October, as well as the spring of 2019, are those same people will attend Summit Learning convening in Wichita. And in December of this year, the K through four, sixth grade sped and administrators are going to go, are going to have our PBL 201 training onsite at our district. What we've launched so far this year is that we already had the dial for kindergarten screening and we also are doing the ASQ3 kindergarten readiness screening. Our, we've continued to use multi-tiered systems of support because we find that our students respond very well to that, to those supports for reading and for math. That's built into our schedule on top of the other, um, redesign elements. We also had already begun implementing active and/or flexible seating in our school where students are able to sit on things like wobble chairs, um, their balance ball chairs. We have the cushy seats. We, we have all sorts of different seating options for our kiddos to sit in, in most classrooms throughout our building. We have launched co-teaching. Um, we may, it may look like supportive, parallel, complementary or team teaching. We've launched our project-based learning already in K through six. We've launched Summit Learning in grades five through six. We also are launching, um, beginning this year, grade looping where our first grade teachers are going to loop up with second. Third grade will loop up to fourth. Fifth grade will loop up to sixth. Those of us that are in grades two, four and six will fall back next year to a first grade and so on, so that we can loop with that group. Kindergarten will be the only grade level in our building that doesn't loop. They'll stay put. And also launching the Panorama Social Emotional Survey. So some of the things that we want to talk more about are the, um, MTSS schedule, co-teaching and planning, project-based learning and our summit learning. This is just a schedule of our fifth and sixth grade, um, summit learning. Um, and we just want to make sure that you, as well as everyone else knows that just because we've redesigned does not mean that we've taken out those really key, important elements that we feel help our at-risk students the most to make sure that they're getting what they need instructionally for math and reading so that those have remained as part of our schedule for all grades, K through six. Our co-teaching and co-planning. This summer after our training that we had in May, we were also given 30 hours of collaborative planning time so that we could work on our PBL projects for the following year. Despite the fact that we are co-teaching and sharing students across all grade levels, all of our students will start the day with a mentor teacher, no matter what, uh, grade level they are in. There are some times where students will all be in the same room at one time in our building. So some, some instruction, um, will occur with as many as 40 to 50 students in a room. But then, um, after those opportunities, the grade level teachers, our paras, our title staff, our sped staff will take those students into smaller groups, um, because we've co-planned together. And those lessons will then be more individualized for student needs. We believe that, um, we are the models with co-teaching for our students for how we want them to be able to work together in a team as well. So our, if we were unwilling to co-teach together and work together, we wouldn't be the kind of models that we want our students to see in the real world. So, but each grade level does get to determine how and when to accommodate those co-teaching opportunities. It's not as though we're all in the same room all day long. Um, but there are certain points in the day that make it easier to co-teach. For instance, our MTSS schedule provides, um, easy opportunities to co-teach. Our engineering by design that we've been using for several years in grades K through four and obviously the project-based learning opportunities. At our training for project-based learning, um, we, our district put a lot of, um, funds behind supporting, having a very good training on how to do, um, project-based learning effectively. And so we went with the Buck Institute because they operate on the gold standard. And some of what they, um, teach us at those trainings is that there are essential project design elements. Um, that's on the red side of the graphic and then on the blue side are those project-based teaching practices. So you see that there's a lot that we are required to do when we're designing a project for our students. It's not going to look like a traditional project where you lecture, have an activity, there's a quiz, another lecture, an activity and a quiz, a review and exam in a project. Instead, through project-based learning units, you're going to have a true project launch. You will, we use rubrics. Um, there are lots of activities, different workshops, research, homework labs in a component at the beginning, um, a benchmark assessment. You will move through so that by the end, the kids are able to present to a real audience and they have reflection on their learning. That is not part of a traditional project. A traditional project, they create something at the very end, they get a grade, it's over. So this is, this is very different and the kids are learning how to, um, revise their work, really. And the, um, content is, um, based on standards with our project-based learning. We always start with a driving question. The students now have choice and voice in what they're learning and how they're going to learn it. They're developing those very important 21st century skills. Um, we are helping them to, um, facilitate meaningful learning with inquiry and innovation. They get feedback from us, from their peers, from other people in the community. And they eventually publicly present their product instead of just presenting it to me or their teacher. So some of the projects that we've already launched this year in our school are the kindergarten project, which is animals around the world. By the end of this project, our kindergarteners will become experts on animals and they will adopt animals at the Rolling Hill Zoo, which is their partner for this project. Our first grade is doing a project called Acrens to Oaks and they will be partnering, partnering with senior citizens in our community. And their plan is to create a, an elderly buddy to help them develop and foster a love of reading. Our second grade team is, um, not doing a year-long project. We're doing several mini projects throughout the year and our first one is friendship skills to. And our first one is friendship skills to boost teamwork. We want to give them the, those background skills so that future projects will run more smoothly because they'll learn how to work in a team. And we are partnering with first graders are our buddies, and we're making for them friendship bracelets. So the kids have already learned about revising because they've had to make friendship bracelets by watching YouTube videos, and they might've had mistakes along the way, so they're learning about revising through that. And then we are also partnering with the high school students to learn about teamwork and friendship skills. And the kids are writing narrative books that they will have an opportunity to share with their first-grade buddies. The third grade is doing Ag Heroes. They have partnered with a lot of different agriculture people in our local area. Ag Man is one of our local farmers, Ag by Air, Depot Market, Farm Bureau, and the Peterson Farm Brothers, who have funny videos on YouTube. They're coming to our school. And eventually, they will host a reception to honor local farmers. The fourth grade is doing Kansas Wildlife, and they are going to be learning about the local wildlife and plants and creating a habitat outside of our school that will attract those wildlife to our school. Fifth grade is doing a classroom economy where they have to learn about financial responsibility. They have to pay rent on their desks. In order to pay rent, they have to have a job. And so to get the job, they had to seek out people to, to write letters of recommendation for them. And then they applied for the jobs that they wanted, and they, and they are able to perform those duties and get money to pay their rent. And the sixth grade is doing ancient civilizations. And this is actually one of their Summit Learning projects, and they will do research on ancient civilizations, create an artifact from that time period, and they will present their work for a live audience. Summit Learning has all of the components that align with our mission as well. The mentoring piece, the project piece, and the self-direction piece. We really feel like that mentoring piece is important because it builds relationships, which is another part of why we chose looping as one of our, one of our redesign elements. The projects are obviously a big part of what we're doing, and Summit has projects built in to the platform. And then that self-direction piece, so that students learn that independence of setting goals, planning for the future, and just having that reflection as well. And I forgot that gets bigger. And so far, we've had a very successful launch this year. So that's what we're doing at the elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, my name is Terry Meckel. I'm from the junior senior high at Minneapolis High School. And the format I have is kind of a slide that Jay shared with me after our conference call last week. And I kind of just went through and added a lot of links that's going on in our building. Again, like Mr. Vannery and Taryn said, that our kind of redesign actually started around 2015, 16. We began to go down to McPherson, was, we made two different trips and did some research with what they were doing with advocates, and tried to mimic that with the best we could in a small school setting. And then from there on, we've taken those groups, committee, college, and community, and tried to branch out and then make this mesh with our school redesign concept. So right now, again, our building goal, our building mission statement is at Minneapolis Junior Senior High School to create a nurturing environment where students can develop the skills necessary to be lifelong learners. And our kind of four targets on that would be student success skills, personalized learning, real-world applications, and community engagement. And so like some of the links I've embedded in here with student success skills that we're looking at. Those four different targets that we, we sat down as we began our redesign concept with, and discussing that, we went through our district-level goals. And as the district then sat down, anyway, with our, with our redesign process, this would be the student success goals that are embedded in the Summit Learning. And Taryn talked about that, and you probably heard that a little bit from Dayton as well, some of the cognitive skills. And these are like, these are real-world job skills that, as Mr. Watson, Dr. Watson said when he went around the communities in Kansas, this is what they're looking for. They're looking for students that, that have these skills. So our district-level goals, then were to increase the number of students that graduate from high school with college credits, CTE certifications, and are prepared for post-secondary education. And then strive to develop a culture of servant leadership in action and provide school-community connection. And then some of the other things here, hopefully we can continue this better. One of our three goals that we developed before we kind of began the redesign process were to increase the post-secondary completion. And then, which would be our students that go to junior college, or tech school, or four-year college, and, or military for two years, and then continue on that path. And improve our rigor relationships and relevance within our building and in our classrooms, provides exposure to post-secondary college, community, military, and technical schools. And with our location, we've been able to do a good job with that. We actually will have some different days where, the days we've been giving the ACT to juniors, we'll maybe do the pre-ACT, the sophomores, we'll take the seniors to Forte State, and we'll take the freshmen to Slyna Tech. And just get them off-campus to go see, see some of the local schools that are in our area. We've taken the eighth graders to more central tech. We've taken this, the juniors to Cloud County and, and things like that. So we've been able to get our kids off-campus and let them get exposed to what's out there in our area. Last goal, develop a culture that demonstrates a servant leadership and provides school-to-community connections. And I'm going to try to open one of these and see if it works better. But these, we go over these every year in our, in our faculty meetings, and it's probably not. Oh, there it is. We go over these every year and kind of update them with different things that, that we do in our classrooms that we'd never really put a tag on it. And then we've just sat down now and, and said, okay, this actually matches what we're talking about with community. This matches what we're doing with college. This matches what we're doing. And let's, let's document it and have it, have it there and say, you know what? One thing that's, that the board has, has added to requirement is 40 hours of community service for our students when they enter high school. That's done out of the school day. So that's in here, and they, they tag their sheets and they turn those in to me. They still can get their diploma, but they would not walk through the ceremony. And that was with this year's junior class. They have, will have to have 40, it'd be 10 a year. And this is all different events that we do during the school year that we feel matches up with community connection. Some of the lead majors we're looking for, and again, the same thing, I won't click into the other ones as well. Some of the lead majors we're looking at for our goals, we look down the column. Articulation agreements with schools that are, that fit our need. Right now, we currently have articulation agreements with Cloud County and Slyna Area Tech. And some of the things what we're doing right now within our school day for our school, we have CNA med terms that we've had about 10 kids for the past six to eight years get their CNA certification in our building. And a lot of them work, you know, right in Minneapolis. It's a, it's a real flexible schedule. They take that on to college with them if they want to, work for a part-time job that pays 15, $18 an hour. Right now, we've got Comp 2, Comp 1, and Comp 2, College Algebra, Psychology. We've added World Geography, and we've also added College Speech within the last year as far as concurrent credit for our students that want to take college-level classes. So we've been able to add some rigor to, to their day. The College Speech has typically been offered in the summertime, but we also now take that during the school day, and they can count it both for school credit and for college credit. For our rigor and relationships relevance, we've added our Summer Implementation 5-8. We're, we're, our building is a 6-8 in that. We have an opt-in project-based learning for our sophomores through seniors. Now, this is, this was the kids voluntarily decide they want to take a project-based learning. We have five students that are attempting this right now. They're getting English credit for that, and the project there is developing them. They've kind of done their own research. They're looking at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. There's some sort of a, a collaboration with Slyna's office and how they could maybe bring something like that to our community. And they're looking at some other things too, recycling, and they've got several different projects in mind for their, for their school year. Entrepreneurship 1 and 2, this was added prior to our launch. We added this through some Daint Hanson grant money that Mr. Vannery was able to allocate. We have, this is an engraving machine. We've got, we've got a, we've got an embroidery machine with a student that's actually embroidering shirts. They're sending us the bill. They get paid the bill. They get, they're, they're making 70%. We keep 30% of the bill. Students get, get paid 30, 70% of what they make here. We've got a banner make machine. This, and these guys are the ones that are probably doing the most business. These are Booster Club banners. And we had a student last year that made over a thousand bucks at least around December and January doing, on the engraving machine by doing mugs. He engraved mugs and, and bottles and things like that. So he, he worked hard at it. I think he chose not to take it again because he worked so hard at it. He needed a break. So. We've got two students right now. We've been, we've, we've got Odysseyware as a virtual, virtual, some virtual stuff online. That is truly just, just the, just straight computer-based curriculum for other classes that we can't teach. We do have a student that's doing a Washburn Tech virtual class. He's taking basic electricity for three hours of Washburn Tech credit in a little Zoom. He's doing a Zoom meeting from 11:00, 11:45 every day in our library. And that's part of a grant that was done through them. And they, we were named in the grant because it's a Daint Hanson money, and our county's in Daint Hanson. We've got a student that asked to do sign language. She's very interested in pursuing that. She found the classes. We talked to the curriculum from the sign language piece. They said the schools have done it past. It's usually a two-for-one. Take two credits on the, of the sign language. It's worth one in your building. And she's already passed her first one, and she's on her second one. I didn't videotape her, but right now on the lower screen there, she's, there's somebody signing, and, and she's actually telling me what the signs are. So, because she's got some experience with it prior to, prior to this, or just taking a class. But I think that's some of the student choices and the personal, personalization that we want to offer in our, in our, in our schools now. If we go down to our goal to expose post-secondary college, community, and military, technical school readiness, I think these are some things that we've done in there. We, we're getting those kids on campus as eighth graders. We're letting them see what's out there. They get in a backhoe and run a backhoe at, at North Central Tech. They do welding simulators. They do paint simulators at Slyna Area Tech. We did a nice tour at Forte State. We did the same thing at Cloud County Community College. They give us nice tours of facilities. And, you know, and kids can see what, what it looks like to be in a junior college or a technical school, a four-year school, and kind of get a feel for what's, what they might like to do. This has some audio to it. We have, like I said, about 2016, 15, 16, we started developing our, our advocates, and then career cruising came about, and we started diving into that. I've got a slideshow here that has, that our, their advocates have gone through what they're doing with students. Our schedule has a 25-minute window during around lunch, and they get small groups of kids, whether it be the seniors this week, the juniors next week, sophomores. And they just go through, and when it hit them all, they'd go around and do it again. So all of our students get some time in career cruising with their advocate. And I'll, oh, let me finish the IPS real quick. Our Individual Plans of Study kind of run along in line with this. This is what ours looks like, and obviously, this is probably big bar installed. Nope, okay, we'll skip that one. And our PT confidence format, we decided, we looked at some data a couple of years ago. We were getting about 35% of our parents showing up for spring conferences. And actually, it was even, even in, even in the fall as well. So in the springtime, we decided to kind of take a target that, the kind of buzzword was student-led. And I didn't, wasn't sure what that meant, but I just kind of took what some of the schools were doing and tried to mirror it a little bit as far as. We made, sent postcards, made appointments, and built a schedule where, as a, as a secondary teacher, I didn't try to see all 80 students. I made appointments for 12 of my students. And so when, so when they came in, they could see me. And if they need to see somebody else, there was like a 10-minute block behind. And that reduced our lines. Our attendance turned to 80%, and, and we've been up to 85% at our best. This last semester, we actually made the phone call, and you would be surprised how challenging that is for 30-year-old veteran teachers to call a parent. I mean, they just, they're used to, they're not, they're, and it's not a, it's not a painful call. It's a call, it's usually, you know, parents meet about your student. Let's see what we can do. Let's look at their goals. Let's see what they want to do next year or down the road. But how, how many of them were nervous to make those phone calls to, to parents? When they did it, they were so glad they did. They wish they had done it in the past. I'm just seeing if I can hit the career cruising here with our high school. Right now, with Summit taking some mentoring pieces off our junior high, they're able to see our high school kids a little bit more frequently because the last couple of years, they've done everybody in the building. So this helped reduce our caseload. Let's see if this will play for me.
Minneapolis has implemented the Advocate Model for Career Cruising. Each student is assigned an advocate, which remains the same throughout high school. The student has 10 contacts each year with that advocate to start the exploration process. The goal is that by the time students are seniors, they will be educated on what career best fits them, as well as which post-secondary path will allow them to reach the goals they have set for themselves. This will ultimately save them valuable time and money.
IPS Individual Plans of Study, essential for students' future success. Career Cruising provides a tool to support our efforts in completing the IPS for each student. During Career Cruising time, advocates are able to assess, define, and review the IPS to develop a vision of their path toward college and career readiness. This screenshot shows a student's My Course Plan that allows them to view a potential four-year course plan. Career. Career Cruising allows students, parents, and the advocates the opportunity to explore, compare, and ultimately match the career that best fits these students' interests, skills, and potential post-secondary options. This is an example of a student who's chose veterinary medicine. Included here are resources that allow the student to research the working conditions, earning potential, listen to interviews, and tutorials by professionals in the field. Post-secondary college and career. There are many tools utilized in this area on Career Cruising, three of which are the School Selector, the Compare School Tool, and Scholarship Search. School Selector is one tool used to match the student's interests and abilities to the student's preferences such as public versus private, four-year versus two-year versus technical institutions, location, price, and in-state versus out-of-state options. Compare School is a tool that allows the student to compare various aspects of several schools on one screen. Scholarship Search is a tool that allows them to research possible funds for post-secondary plans. Here, students can answer a series of questions that will match their preferences with a matched school. This section of Career Cruising is an example of where they can compare schools at a glance on one page. Additional Advocate Responsibilities. Soft skills were deemed a necessary component for the advocates to cover with the students. Advocates cover resume building, social media responsibilities, interview skills, and other important traits.
I think this will be a good fit as far as. Because I don't know if that's, I know the junior high kids can get in there, but as far as what I've kind of noticed in the last couple of years, we've had, and I'll explain about our job fair, seventh and eighth grade students don't really have that career focus yet where our high school students do. So we can see our high school kids a little bit more frequently, and I think that'll be a better fit because the Summit Learning has a mentoring piece in it for our junior high students, which I think is a great fit for them. A few things that in our last community engagement that we've, we've added, and these, some of these things were done prior to, again, prior to our being a Gemini school. We were encouraged by doing a job fair, and this is something, this has been our, we've done this for three years. This is my last grid of the last time we did it. We basically used the final flower on the State Department's website about kind of categorizing our jobs. So like the purple is, might be a theme, the blue might be a theme, and the, the gray would be a theme. So if I'm a student that kind of had a theme about business, for every 20-minute block, I could try to find a business and try to hit a business piece through the course of the day. We did this on early release day. We have, and at this time zone, like this first time zone, we have all these people, they're presenting for 20 minutes, and then, so the students can choose where they want to go. As we've kind of done this over the course of three years, we assigned them at first. That was a really a lot of work, and then the kids would get places, and they, you know, they forgot where they wanted to go. We gave them some choice, and I think it worked a lot better this year for what we did this. And these are all, if you go down this list, we had, you know, over almost 30 presenters coming in, and they would do several sessions for us. Sometimes there'd be eight or nine in the room, maybe a dozen or more. Sometimes it'd be one or two. It kind of depends on how the students, how that, how that group fell, fell out. But they, the presenters really have a nice job with it. These are, this is the gentleman that's from North Central Tech doing a welding, tells us about welding. We've got one doing some, here's a graphic design. And he, this guy runs drones for Land Pride, and, and they did aerial footage and puts marketing packages together for them. marketing packages together for them. Again, we have another, North Central Tech, another, another career that they have as far as programming was, which was, worked well. They actually had some demonstrations there for our students. It's been a great day. Again, the Community Service Day. One of the, one of the things we implemented this, we kind of thought there might be a lot of kids that would skip that day and mom, dad might call them in. It's actually one of our best-attended days of the year. I think last year we had four students gone on the Community Service Day. And it's on the calendar. It's not a surprise. We tell them to bring, bring their work gear, bring gloves, bring jeans, wear jeans, whatever it might be. This would be just a list of jobs that we tackled this year. They're doing some yard cleanup for some people that, that aren't able to get their yards cleaned up at this point in time in their life. There's, these students are assembling some bleachers down at our fair board. We have a rescue dog area. These kids come and did some work in their yard, got, give the dogs a little TLC while they were there. We went to some of our outline communities and did some work. This is in Delphus Museum, some things the gals were doing. We have a community garden. This is some junior high students that have kind of taken that community garden. The eighth graders have kind of taken that project on. They go out there in the fall and spring and that's their, that's their deal, that they like to really work in there with their teacher. We had a kind of a big one that, that kind of just, that came about with, through our 4H or FFA, excuse me, FFA department called Eggs for Everyone. And this was kind of just a, maybe a brainstorm by our ag department and our leader there. Well, they have basically designed and built with donations, grants, community support, volunteer labor. We actually have a chicken house that's sitting in our district that has 50 chickens. Right now we've got, it says we've got three, 30 Rhode Highlands and, and 30 white pullets that are in our little, in their little house. They're laying up to, they're already laying out, laying eggs. It's like a month and a half, half early, but they're putting out like 50, 60 eggs a day. And right now we're not buying eggs for our cafeteria. They're giving eggs to our local community. Some of our, they have the, Love Inc. is our local community where you can get some groceries if you can't afford it this month or, so they're giving eggs out to that. The students then are doing a lot of the business models with it. They've got to do a lot of the work. Their, the chickens need cared for in summertime, clean, water fed, all those things they're doing here. This, this is in the bottom of our egg shop. Again, some of the funding here that was raised, $1,200 for National FFA grant, and then the rest has been by FFA and 239 and some in-kind donations. We walked into a basketball game. They had a poster up on time. A gentleman pulled out a hundred and said, "That's a great cause. Here's a hundred dollars towards your project." And that's kind of funding that we've, we've, and kind of support we get from this, these kind of projects. There's what the final, it's a, if you were a chicken, this is where you'd want to be. It's a, it's a pretty nice place. So it's, but it is, they've, they've done a nice job with it. And again, finished summer of 18 and I think that, you know, the chickens were probably due to lay eggs sometime in September. They started in August, so they weren't on schedule.
Happy chickens.
And then this is my, this will be my third year as principal. So this is, thank you out of time. Very good. One thing we've done and staff barbecue, I think building culture and climate starts with our staff and they just love coming. It's a great event. This year we went to a trap shooting park and, and had a nice event with that. And again, student climate, I think our student climate is great. Of course, I'm probably the last to know when there's, when it's not, but, but I think right now we have a great pep club. We have a great, nice inviting community and, and school. So some of the systems and structure we have in place, again, we have the middle of the day, we've got the time for the career cruising. We've got a unique junior high schedule that's working alongside with the high school schedule so the students can do their summit requirements and then still take electives. And then we're going to have more efforts to support the project-based learning and training and look at expanding it to the ninth grade at some capacity as we, as we move these junior high students up, up the, up the ladder in high school. And our progress lead measures, obviously we'd be looking, listening to student feedback, tracking our national clearinghouse data, implementing panorama surveys, which is a, which is a nice package tool that we can use, continue to read our summit data and then, and, and evaluate our culture from our students' point of view. So any questions?
Yeah, you indicated the 40 hours of community service. When I first got on this board, which is a little over three and a half years ago, I got a series of telephone calls, none from your school. And the question, and from two or three different schools. And the question was, they, can they make my kid do community service? And I said, yes. I mean, a simple answer. Did you get any feedback? Did you get any pushback on that at all?
I had one. And she's already got 30 hours done.
Okay.
It was for mom and dad, but, but she, the student has no problem with it.
Okay.
So it was kind of a one. So that's been it.
Wow. That was all going on north of me and it's great to know all of that. And one of these days I'm going to come up and see, see it in action. I moved to accept the redesigned plans of North Ottawa County USD 239 for Minneapolis Grade School and Minneapolis Junior/Senior High to be implemented during the 2018 to 19th school year as a participant in the Gemini One Project. And congratulations.
Is there a second? Jim McNeese seconds the motion. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have banners and certificates, so we have both elementary and secondary. So it'll be two groups unless you, unless you want to do it together and that would be your choice. And then the board will reconvene at 11 o'clock.
Well, next up, I'm very excited to introduce Newton, USD 373. This is the Santa Fe 56 Middle School. He'll be presenting to you. The other two buildings in their district who are Gemini Ones are taking a little extra time to do some planning and they will be launching next year. So it's up to you.
Good morning and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here. I'm Sheila Winling, the Assistant Superintendent for Newton, and I have the pleasure of welcoming this dynamic group of educators. I believe that you've been hearing from other schools sharing and I just cannot say enough about them, how willing, how courageous, how energetic they are, and they truly inspire me. So with that, I'm going to let them show you what we're going to be doing.
We're just going to introduce real quick. I'm Jen Smith. I'm the principal at Santa Fe.
I'm Brandon Chees, the Assistant Principal of Santa Fe.
Pete Anderson, Computer Teachers.
I'm Jennifer Duncan and I teach sixth grade math and science.
I'm Karen McCabe-Yonkey. I teach fifth grade language arts and science.
And I'm G.B. Jost. I'm a school social worker at Santa Fe for the sixth graders.
So we're just kind of culminating this. Several of the, these folks have been on our redesign team since day one. So we really, we wanted to get perspectives of all different kinds of staff. So, you know, from our specials to fifth and sixth grade ELA math, all the different, just thoughts and perspectives. So then we'll, we'll get into that. So just initially, we were really excited to jump on board last year, last fall, when, or last summer, I guess, when we had this opportunity. So when our redesign team met, like we were, we felt kind of a freedom to be able to start from scratch and do, you know, develop what we want our school to look like, but it was very overwhelming. So we had to start with what is our why? What is important to us? So what we asked our staff to do was send videos or pictures of their family. So we've got, I'm not going to go through it because we have limited time, but something that we've showed to our staff and to our community is just, these are our pictures of our kids. Like this is our why. This is important that, you know, we would want this for our kids and our grandkids and we want this for all kids. So initially, one of the first things we did was just dream big. What is our overall goal? And so as we looked at the videos of, of our kids, like the big smiles on their faces, that's what we want for all kids coming to our school. So, you know, what can we do differently? We're doing a lot of great things, you know, we are in pieces. We're doing a lot of great things, but what can we do differently consistently across the board? So we brought in parents, community, Board of Education members, staff to develop, you know, what is our big vision for our school? So in that, we developed a shared vision. So I'll let you read through that. But our basis is building those relationships and working together. So we are doing this all together with our community. So I mentioned our, what is our big goal? So we wanted to create a SMART goal so, so we could see measurable, something achievable for us. So by May 2019, our average daily attendance will increase from 95% to 97%, given the implementation of our battle wigs. So that's our big, big, our big win, our big war wig. So then we'll get into what are those smaller battles? What are things that we wanted to do in our school to be able to get to that?
In redesigning our education, these are our five main goals. Personalized learning, relationship, social, emotional responsiveness, citizenship, and personal accountability. We presented this to our district staff in Newton 373 in the opening, at our opening assembly. If you liked his video, I had a lot to do with it. If not, talk to Ms. Smith.
I think Dr. Watson has already seen this, so when you get to the point.
I approve. It's good.
Hi, for those of you that don't already know me, I'm Jen Smith and it's my honor to be the principal at Santa Fe 56.
[music]
Eastern recovery, hurry. Discovery, Roger, man, throttle. Eastern recovery, go ahead.
Discovery, go at throttle.
Three, two, one.
This is Mission 41B. The first flight of the orbiter Discovery and the shuttle has cleared the tower.
[music]
Welcome to the Redesign Rocket. I'm Brandon Chees, the Assistant Principal at Santa Fe. Ladies, can you introduce yourselves and tell me where you're headed?
I'm Jennifer Duncan. I teach sixth grade math and science.
I'm Karen McCabe-Yonkey. I teach language arts and science, fifth grade.
And we're going.
We are headed to the moon.
All right. This is how this is going to work. I'm going to ask you a series of questions and you're going to have two shout-outs if you need help. Are you ready?
Ready.
Yep.
All right. The first question is, what is the main goal for Santa Fe's redesign?
Well, we want to increase attendance and reduce tardies.
Right. Yeah, we basically want to keep kids in school and make it relevant and engaging for them.
Okay, let's find out if that's question's right.
[beep].
Santa Fe person, right. Very good. Next question. What are Santa Fe's five battle wigs or areas of focus for their redesign?
First one is personalized learning.
Right. Relationships.
Mm-hmm. Social, emotional relationships.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Citizenship.
Mm-hmm. And personal accountability.
Yeah, I think that sounds right.
Okay.
Is that right?
Let's check.
[beep].
All right.
All right.
Now this is going to be a little bit tough. Who's impacted by Santa Fe's redesign? A, the students, B, the staff, C, the communities, or D, families?
Hmm. That is hard.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that one. Can we use a shout-out?
Yeah, let you use your first shout-out.
Okay.
Hey Pete, where are you?
The answer's all the way above.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we're going to go with what Pete said.
Yeah, what Pete said.
All right, let's check and see if that's correct.
[beep].
All right. Hey Pete.
All right, y'all chose wisely. The next question. Name five deciding changes that would launch Santa Fe into a new direction.
Let's see. First one would be interest-based enrichment groups for all students.
Right. We're going to have weekly class meetings with restorative justice practices.
Mm-hmm. There'll be a check-in, checkout system for students.
Right. Personalized and project-based learning.
Mm-hmm. And lastly, individualized mentoring for all students.
Right.
All right, let's see if that's correct.
[beep]. All right. Good job.
Y'all are on the road. We're down to the last question. Why is Kansas focusing on the redesign?
Hmm. That, that one's kind of tough too.
Yeah, that's tough.
Yeah, I think we need to use our last shout-out.
All right, this is your last one.
Okay, hey Dr. Watson, can you help us out on this one?
Well, when we took a look at what the needs were in Kansas economically, 70, 75% of the job market in our state requires what we call two pieces of paper. A high school diploma and another certificate. That's could be a welding certificate, associate degree, backhoe, masters, and PhD. We're currently studying at 46%. So we need more kids to go on to be successful after high school. And success meaning another piece of paper. In order to do that, Kansas said, "We think the system itself isn't set up to do that." So we need to change the system. Teachers are great, principals are great, communities are great, but the system wasn't set up to have every kid be successful. So these, uh, these schools are taking on that challenge and producing a new design that we think will help those kids be successful.
Yeah, yeah. He sounds like he knows what he's talking about.
We agree.
All right, let's check and see if that's correct.
[beep].
Right.
Woo.
You know, after playing this game, I feel like students are the ones that's going to be the big, biggest winners. We're looking forward to sharing more information coming to your upcoming staff meetings. If you have any questions, be sure to email Ms. Smith. Goodbye.
Bye.
We choose to go to the moon. We choose to go to the moon. We choose to go to the moon in this decade and do the other thing, not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Because that challenge is one that we're willing to accept, one we are unwilling to postpone, and one we intend to win.
I, I want to say thank you. I did, I had everything to do with that video. I love it. Doesn't seem like y'all really enjoyed it, so.
We've had a really great time. It's, I mean, we've taken the redesign.
Microphone, please.
We've been taking the redesign seriously, but, you know, at the same time, we have to have fun with it because that's what we want. We want our kids to come in and have fun too. So teachers are going to go over, you know, those elements that you saw in the video in a little bit more detail and what exactly those things are that we're, that we're doing in our classrooms today that are impacting our students.
I'm going to speak on restorative justice. This summer, all Santa Fe staff were trained in restorative justice practices by KIPCor. That's the Kansas Institute for Peace and Conflict Resolution located in North Newton. We learned that restorative justice is a worldview, a set of principles and values that come from the practices of indigenous peoples around the globe. Restorative practices in schools use a restorative approach that ties into the social-emotional learning, conflict resolution, and trauma-sensitive learning environments. Restorative practices seek to support a positive school climate, and we know that school climate matters. When students know that their teachers care about them and they are more motivated to learn and to take risks. The application of restorative practices includes the use of circles. We set aside 30 minutes every Monday morning for circle time. Circles allow for the following. A voice for everyone. No one is invisible in the circle, even if they choose not to speak. The development of empathy and responsibility. Shared leadership. It allows for the differences and multiple perspectives. And because we use a talking piece, probably one of the most difficult practices, self-regulation. If you don't have the talking piece, you don't talk. We also practice the zones of regulation. We include those at Santa Fe by each morning having a check-in. Students place a popsicle stick into the jar that represents how they're feeling based on the colors from zones of regulation. It provides the opportunity for self-reflection and to name their feelings. Teachers and counselors Teachers and counselors know which students are struggling when they arrive at school. And it opens up conversations that we might not have had otherwise. Additionally, each class provides a safe corner where students can go if they need to self regulate or refocus. What that says to me that it's okay to struggle. And sometimes we need a break. We can name it, we can practice the strategies that we need to deal with it and then return to work.
Good morning. I especially want to thank this board for allowing the focus to be on social, emotional. Because of that, I now have another social worker working at Santa Fe. So I do not have the responsibility of the social, emotional and trauma needs of 530 students. I now have 250, which is still a big number, but I am ecstatic. Because we were, um, we were able to hire the additional social worker, I now can really meet a child's needs. What are their emotional needs? Before it was a matter of what do I have time to do? And I had the higher priority things and lots and lots of kids got lost in that. I am a part of a community group of people who wanted to be included into the schools in some way. As a whole community, we decided and looked at the problem of kids understanding what healthy relationships look like, both in friendships to dating relationships. And that a lot of them really don't have any idea what it is and they just assume it's okay that there's emotional abuse or any other kind of, you know, disasters, unhealthy relationships. They thought that was okay, that that's normal. We really want to teach them differently. So a group that got together from the police department, DCF, St. Francis, Kansas Learning Center for Health, our health department. We all got together and started putting together, how can we meet the need of teaching children what a healthy relationship looks like? And we are now starting that where the individual agencies come into our building and teach kids about what a healthy relationship looks like. Um, one of the first agencies that signed up is our Safe Hope, which is the domestic violence shelter in our community. And she is all about teaching kids about what a healthy relationship looks like when you are a friend. What a healthy relationship looks like in a dating relationship. What a healthy relationship looks like as you pursue and as you grow older and start thinking about long term relationships. And that if it's not a healthy relationship, number one, you'll recognize it. And number two, have the strength to get out of it because you know where to go for resources. And number three, that you know those resources are not going to disappear, that they will be there and that you will be able to continue that as you start to rebuild your life. So thank you very much.
Another change that we've made is going away from the traditional, uh, 28 hours of parent teacher conferences that we did. Uh, this year we front loaded our hours by taking two days and we actually went to every student's home. Uh, we invited our staff up and all staff went and we went in teams. And the goal of this was just to make the students more comfortable and the parents more comfortable around us. Uh, as the kids entered the school for the first day, they'd already met several teachers. Um, and also we were hoping that by us stepping out and reaching out to the parents in this way, the parents are also more comfortable coming in to see us when they need to. Um, one of the biggest things that I think a lot of our staff and students are most excited about is our interest based enrichment groups. Uh, all of these are tied to STEAM and they incorporate a community service project. Every nine weeks, the students will change and they're gonna be exposed to different interests that they may have. Uh, and we hope that this will get students thinking about their career pathway and what they're interested in. Along with that, students are exposed to more students in the school. Fifth and sixth graders are mixed together in this, uh, and they're also exposed to more teachers. So, uh, we're hoping to build more positive relationships with each kid as they're exposed to more people within our building. Uh, while also getting them excited about coming to school and taking part in something that they're already interested in.
All right, so for our personalized learning, our project based learning approach that we wanted to go with, we went with Summit Learning, which I know you guys have heard a lot about from some other districts that have also done that. Um, we really wanted to look for something that was going to help keep kids engaged. And with Summit, we spend 70% of our day in project based learning. Real world problems, they're applying their cognitive skills, they're collaborating with each other, they're having to think critically to solve issues. And, um, you know, work, work through a problem. It teaches a lot of, a lot of skills like teamwork, um, how to persevere, to find an answer when you might not have it at first. Um, and they work with us. Um, we pull small groups with us to meet with, um, kind of work through some skills maybe that the students struggling on a little bit. And then we also have them meet with peers. There's kids who can sign up to run a workshop themselves, so the students are kind of doing that reciprocal teaching. The other 30% of our time is spent on self directed learning, um, where students are acquiring content knowledge that they use in their projects uh, through a variety of resources. The students have the power to choose what they or how they want to learn a particular bit of information. They can watch videos, they can do a practice website, they can read an article. It's all about what works best for them. And then they study through their information and when they think they're ready, they meet with the teacher and the teacher sends a content assessment to them. And they need to show mastery of their skill by getting at least an eight out of 10 on the content assessment. And these, they can work at their own rate all through the year. So it's not going to, um, punish a student who is maybe ahead of the class. They're going to be able to work ahead and it's not gonna punish the students who might be a little bit behind. Everybody's at their own spot in the self directed learning. And part of self directed learning is the students set goals for themselves. They have to be a smart goal. And with that, uh, they set that with their mentor. We do one to one mentoring, 10 minutes every week. And that helps them develop habits of success, um, like a developing growth mindset, um, resilience, perseverance. And we help them meet those goals through what we do in the classroom, but that lets us be more one on one with them. We know exactly what they're wanting to do and they can even start looking at goals beyond sixth grade or fifth grade.
Um, I just want to tell you, as a parent moving to Newton, um, I have a fifth and I have a sixth grader. Um, the redesign has really helped with that transition. Um, as I showed my kids the interest based group, um, manual that we had, they were all excited about that. Um, and it's also helped me with my relationship with my kids. Being in education, you always go and try to ask your kids and want to talk about your educational day. But now my kids are coming, talking to me, telling me about it. So it has really been a positive for just me as a parent as well. Um, my, my daughter's coming, she's a more of a social and she used to tell me the social aspect, but she came and she was telling me, Dad, I got a seven out of 10 and I'm gonna retake it tomorrow. And when she finally accomplished it, she came and said, hey, dad, I got an eight out of 10. I don't know what I, um, what I missed the last time, but I went back and I went through everything. So it's really has helped with that and I can, um, I really believe that other families are doing the same thing as well.
And I would just echo that. I have a fifth grader that's also at the building, so just the level of conversation as a parent that I can have every day. Cause I have, you know, parents have access to see all this data through the Summit platform. And I mean, the kids are just excited to talk about their day from the interest based groups to Summit. And so it's been a learning process for all of us, but it's, we're all able to do it much more together and cohesively. So that is our presentation, so I guess we're open for questions.
Thank you, it's very impressive. Newton is not in the district I represent, but I have a personal relationship. In four years, my granddaughter, who is a first grader at Sunset, is gonna be in your building. And four years after that, her little brother will be there, maybe by that time, some of you need to consider retiring. Unless he changes. Questions, Ken, do you have a motion?
I do have, Mr. President, thank you. First, I have a question. Um, I, I don't think you covered it, but how is the, your community, your parents and community accepting these changes? Cause it's pretty revolutionary what you're doing.
Yeah, so we, we tried to be, um, forward thinking and, you know, trying to get information out to the community. We've had at least six different community, um, meetings where we've had about half of those at our school and the other half, we've gone out into the community. So it didn't feel like, you know, you had to come to the school and sometimes parents aren't, would rather go to a community place. So, um, we've had lots of great questions, um, and a lot of those questions have honestly been from staff in other buildings that, you know, they're just kind of have questions themselves on how, how this works. Um, so in that, then we've decided this year, we're also going out to the staff meetings in September and October to our other schools. So we can have a similar presentation that we're providing to, to those staff as well, cause Newton's not huge. So I think, you know, we're starting to kind of get that out to everybody. So we haven't really had, um, I can say issues or problems with community not being supportive. We just had a lot of questions. I just think I would also add to that, that the community themselves, not just parents, have been very interested in what we're doing. Especially with our interest based groups and the, uh, community service projects every week. I've been, um, talking with United Way. We have, um, several businesses right along Main Street, cause we're right in downtown Newton, that are wanting to be able to come in and talk with interest based groups about different things. Um, and not necessarily part of our redesign, but, um, Norm's Coffee Shop on Main Street in Newton does mentoring uh, for our students mainly. I mean, it's anyone in the district can go, but they're half a block away from us, so our kids can just walk over. And every day after school, they can go and get water and a snack and hang out. And they have adult volunteers in there who, um, just sit with the kids and talk to them about their day and help them work maybe through some issues that they're having. So that's been a partnership, actually, that's kind of been in place since last year even. So it's been really fun to see.
All right, anybody else, yes, sir?
Um, it's opened up partnerships with the community. Um, I, the Lions Club, we met with them and they're very interested. They're just excited to try to help and be a part, new young professionals. We talked to them as well, so everyone we talked to, they just seem excited and trying to see how they can be a part and come and help us accomplish the goals for our community and kids.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I did have a chance to visit, uh, Santa Fe School last week, or I guess that was this week. Um, and, um, was very impressed with how, how students were, every student seemed to be engaged. I didn't see anybody that was wasting time and I didn't see any teachers standing at the front of the, standing in front of a whiteboard, teaching kids. So that, it was a, a good, healthy learning environment, it seemed to me. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the redesign plans of Newton USD 373 for the Santa Fe uh, 56 Center to be implemented during the 2018 school year as a participant in the Gemini One Project.
Thank you, there's a second. Kathy Bush seconds that motion and we have a question for Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of quick questions, was your, uh, home visits, did you reach 100%? Did you get total saturation? Did you get to visit every home?
Um, so that's, that was a learning process for us, cause it was a couple of days. We started actually school two days later than the rest of the districts, so we could have those two days. So in processing, you know, how could we do it differently? I think being consistent in how we reached out to parents, we're gonna do differently next year. Um, so we did, um, process all of those things after the visits and I would say overall, most teachers got anywhere from 60 to 80%. So there was a variety.
Well, what I would like to ask is the second question is, because I think this underscores how, how different some of our schools are and how redesign is community based. So I don't know what the difficulties would be in trying to replicate this in a more urban environment, particularly where we have a lot of transients. Where we had a lot of folks, they're, they're not homeowners, the renters, short term renters at that. Maybe we're dealing with more drug issues and mental illness and also a whole host of urban issues. Uh, would you have any suggestions on how we could increase home visits in urban environments in, say, the Kansas City area?
I'm very passionate about our social, emotional piece that we are addressing now. You've got to put the people in the place. You've got to put social workers, and I'll just be honest, I'm prejudiced. You've got to put social workers in there so they have the time to make home visits. Because when I was only, when I was serving 530, there's no way, there is no way I could get out of the building. But now that I have 250, I can get out of the building. I can go to Norm's after school and catch up with kids, or I can go make a home visit when a kid is struggling. Um, I just, I just don't have the restrictions any longer that I have got to stay in my building. Many of the parents we serve were themselves trauma victims. Some of them, the trauma occurred at school. They're not gonna dart our doors, so we've got to be flexible and have the flexibility to go to them.
Thank you.
I, I do want to speak on that. I'm from Memphis, Tennessee, so inner city, I understand that aspect of it. I think we can't be afraid to go to communities just because they're labeled in some cases as crime infested. Um, I was most impressed when I talked to the teachers and those that's coming from a different background and realizing the life that the kid is facing and going in that house and seeing the neighborhood. Now they have a better understanding of the kid as a kid and what they might truly be facing with the trauma behind it. So that was the most impressive thing to me, because I can tell you all day, but until you walk in and experience it yourself, then you'll see. So next time we have a home visit, I will invite you to come if you would like to come.
And we had a, a nice process to make sure that we made contact with every parent in an, in advance, so that they could choose from a block of time that met their goals. So that if they worked at nights, we would come in the afternoon. I think that helped. Um, we contacted by email, we made phone calls. If we did not hear from them, we followed up with another phone call. Now, we did have a couple of people say there, you are not stepping your foot on my home area. I will not answer the door. And we said, that's just fine, I respect you. And we invited them to our open house, which was the following evening. They said, I'll be there. And both times that happened to me, those parents did show up. But that also gives you a lot of information. And for any, for some of our at risk students, we were able to take other trained individuals, um, some, if, you know, some of our special ed kids that have high needs. We were able to take social workers with us on that home visit and boy, it just made the beginning of the year so much better. We have to be able to meet our parents and our students where they are and not expect them to always come to the school.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? You are approved. At this time, the official meeting will be adjourned. Uh, we have a professional development activity for board members that's optional and we will reconvene at 11:45.
And we've got some photo ops.
Yeah, we're gonna take it, we need the, we have a certificate and a banner to present to you. That'll be right here.